I know that the tape has started. We're gonna wait a couple of minutes. We have a newly appointed member. It's their first meeting, so we're gonna give them a couple of minutes to get here, you know, first time.
Can you give them the address?
Yeah, yeah.
Poor guy.
Hey. Usually I'm good about returning post-treatment.
Better prioritize. We do have more bags, and she probably only has one case.
True.
You know how it is, like, hey guys, who wants to this one?
Yes.
Drew, what section is site plan review under?
Do you remember what section site plan?
Yeah, I don't know if Megan.
See what I mean? Like, it'd be nice if we were there.
See your name placard down through Mr. Seer and Mr. Bergeron.
Right here, there you go. All right, nice to meet you.
Just concerning the, yeah, subdivision.
So you're saying, how you been? How you been?
I read the email that got me.
Yes.
Good evening. At this time, I would like to call the February 11th, 2020 meeting of the Auburn Planning Board to order. Our first order of business will be roll call. I will start on my far right.
Matthew Duval.
John Engler.
Steven Martelli.
Evan Seer.
Andrew Parry.
Riley Bergeron.
Our next agenda is minutes. There are none for us to approve at this time. However, all meetings are available on the city's YouTube channel if you would like to preview the previous meeting. Before we begin with our public hearings, I will note that we have a full member absent. Dan Carroll is absent tonight. Tonight, we also have two new members on the board, so I'd like to congratulate Mr. Andrew Parry and Mr. Riley Bergeron. They were appointed by the City Council as associate members. As is part of the board policy, we will be having them act as full members for the remainder of the meeting because we do, we are short three full members. That means that Mr. Parry and Mr. Bergeron will have full voting rights and the ability to both make and second motions, as well as participate in any conversation of the board. Having said that, our next agenda item is a public hearing regarding the West Shore Landing Final Subdivision, proposing three 12-unit apartment buildings and associated parking driveways, landscaping utilities, and other site improvements located on North River Road, parcel ID number 271-101, in the Shoreland and General Business zoning districts. The way we conduct our public hearings is that the board hears a report from the staff. Members of the board may then ask staff questions. When the board is done asking questions of the staff, we will ask the applicant or an agent for the applicant to come forward and share any additional information. They feel it's pertinent, the board may ask that individual or those individuals questions regarding the project. When the board is done speaking to the applicant or the applicant's agent, we will open the Public Input section of the hearing. At that time, we will invite members of the public to come forward. I'll remind you at that time to please state your name and address and speak clearly into the mic. That's because these meetings are recorded, and it's a matter of public record. When no more individuals from the public wish to speak, we will close the Public Input section of the hearing and move on to board deliberations and possible actions. Is staff ready to present their report?
Yes. Just before we get into the report specific to this project, the board received, and staff received, since the last meeting, a legal opinion regarding whether or not the city could review these projects under multifamily dwellings, under subdivision or site law. Prior to a law change in 2018, we had historically reviewed these projects under Site Plan and Special Exception Review. The law change in 2018 changed the standard that we use in determining whether or not the city could apply the Site Plan and Special Exception instead of subdivision to, in my opinion, an easier-to-meet standard, that if we have a Site Plan Review ordinance that meets a few criteria that are outlined in the legal opinion, then we clearly can review them under Site Plan Special Exception. We've proceeded long ways through the review under the subdivision standards, so I think it is possible to approve this process, project, under the subdivision standards, although the developer is meeting a higher standard than would be required under Site Plan Special Exception. So we want to recognize that. And also, I think it would be helpful if, as the board goes through the review, staff has tried to outline the parallels between the subdivision standards of our ordinance and the Site Plan Special Exception standards. It would be best if the board makes findings under both of those standards at this point for this project. The reason is that we are, we're holding them to a higher standard on a few areas, such as the recreational uses and the requirement to pay a fee in lieu of. The developer seems plenty willing to pay that fee, but as staff, we just want to make sure that the board knows that they have the option of reviewing this under Site Plan Special Exception, and that wouldn't have required the extraction of the fee. The reason that that's, because we have a developer that is willing to do that, we still don't want to take advantage of that situation, but I think the reason that it's most important going forward is applying that subdivision standard would make it entirely unfeasible to do multifamily housing in our urban core, in the downtown, because the recreation fee, the open space fee, being based on the value of the property or surrounding properties. In our downtown, we have a very, very high per acre value on some of the smaller properties with substantial development on them. As an example, the city of Auburn owned property that we've been pushing for development at 186 Main Street, if we were to do an 18-unit project there, the recreation open space fee would be $480,000 approximately. And up until now, we've been unable to attract a developer that would build a project like that, even though the city has desired it, even without mention of that fee. It just has been hard to make the numbers work, so. The last thing I want to do is confuse the process for this particular project late in the game because of this interpretation. But there's, there had been even disagreement among staff on how that should be interpreted, and it's taken a while to get the legal opinion to clear all that up. So we're hoping that as you go through, you can continue with your findings under subdivision, as the board's worked very hard to iron out most of those. There was a few remaining for this second and final approval under subdivision. But hopefully, looking through the spreadsheet that I've provided, see the parallels between the two standards for the different types of projects and make a finding under Site Plan Special Exception as well.
So, to be clear before we proceed, it's my understanding that staff is under the impression that the best course of action would be for the planning board to conduct this public hearing as a subdivision hearing, but that we make findings with regard to both subdivision and site plan, such that final approval would either be for or against a subdivision, not a Site Plan Review.
Would be for either one.
For either one?
Yeah, and I, the reason I say that is just in, we'll be working with our legal counsel to make sure that we're not extracting something from the developer that would be cause for legal concern on our side. So we'd like to board to make the finding under Site Plan Special Exception as well. And if our legal counsel advises us against trying to collect that fee, we wouldn't collect that fee.
I'm gonna suspend our regular rules for a moment, and instead of waiting until the staff report is done, stop now and ask, are there members of the board that have questions specific to this issue?
So, just what you're saying is if we did site plan, then the idea of the fee in lieu goes away?
It, it would.
It would, and then so the plan with Parks and Rec to build sidewalks and things like that would also?
Sidewalks is still part of the plan, so this, this is where I've struggled with this. We get this late interpretation from our attorney, because the last thing I want to do, and I think the developer as well, is to create controversy around the project when we're this close to an approval under subdivision. But I do think that, under this legal opinion, if we force the developer, maybe he wants to pay that fee anyways towards recreation. If we force the developer, we've required him to do something beyond what the ordinance requires, is our concern.
Yeah, I guess clarify what you mean by the sidewalks will be part of the plan.
So the sidewalks are part of the plan. The city, the city wants to, then we're still working with the council on it. The city wants to take the portion of tax revenues that this project will generate that would be lost to county subsidy and reduce school revenues, revenue sharing, and use that to fund the sidewalks. Basically, it shifts, Lewiston will pick up the bigger portion of the county share by us sheltering the dollars from the county tax figuring, as with Eddie Tiff, and we'd like to use that in order to build the sidewalks.
Okay. Anything else that would change if this was done in site plan versus, is it just the Parks and Rec?
No, so the, the plans would be the same.
Yep.
You know, the plans are what they are.
Yep.
We think that they meet both standards, but some of the standards that are required under Site Plan and Special Exception, in my opinion, are easier to meet than they are under subdivision.
Yeah, I guess what I'm saying is, we've heard about subdivision, and we've talked about that in specific ways. If we, this gets approved under site plan, what things, in addition to the open space, are, would then be called into question, like, so would be in a more stringent place than?
So I, the plans are as they're proposed, so I think the developer has made provisions to exceed the requirements of Site Plan and Special Exception. That wouldn't change. The plans would, the approved plans would be the approved plans.
Okay.
I think you would just have a product that meets subdivision, exceeds Site Plan and Special Exception, but still meets it.
Okay.
The planning board began reviewing this application in November, and the approved preliminary plan with conditions at the January meeting. Many of the conditions will be carried over from the preliminary approval to the final plan. You'll see that the applicant has provided a list of those on the final plan. The letter of map revision, based on fill, these are the conditions that were, that were carried over. The final geotech report, once the final grading and foundation loading has been determined. The building height limitation of 35 feet in the Shoreland Zone, measured from the mean of the gable, and the addressing plan for the units would all be conditions that carry over from the preliminary approval and get incorporated into the final plan to ensure that they're met. The other condition that the planning board requested as part of the preliminary approval is a summary of how the project will not adversely affect the character of the surrounding neighborhood and will not tend to depreciate the value of property adjoining the neighborhood. The applicant, in staff's opinion, has done a good job providing that. They'll present that information to you tonight. It was in your packets as well. Section 3 of their response addresses that. You'll notice that the uses in the neighborhood align most exactly with the zoning map as well. There's a multifamily suburban zoning district that does allow for some commercial uses as special exceptions, but the actual commercial uses tend to stay pretty strictly within the general business area. This project is also proposed in the general business area where multifamily uses are allowed. The two other multifamily developments in the neighborhood are also clustered in the same area as this proposed development. Our ordinance doesn't specifically define neighborhood or neighborhood boundaries, but when we send out public notices for projects like this, we send it to a list of abutting properties within 500 feet. So from a precedent setting standard, we think that the 500-foot radius around the project is a reasonable way to define the neighborhood. That's how far we had sent notices for this project to the abutters. The applicant used our same method when determining the character of the neighborhood to assess properties within that same, same radius, and that was at staff's suggestion. While we don't have a specific definition, character goes beyond just land uses and can get into design of projects, transportation components, et cetera. So it's important that the design of the building is essentially mirroring the multifamily building. To make use of the work that's already been done by the planning board on this proposal, we recommend that the board make a finding on subdivision, site plan, and special exception. I talked briefly about that before. As we've already discussed, the standards for subdivision, site plan, and special exception are similar, and the applicant has already provided responses to the subdivision standards. The planning board can use that information to make a ruling on the Site Plan Special Exception standards. I just want to reiterate as part of that, that it's absolutely not the developer's fault for not providing the Site Plan Special Exception standards. That was really based on the staff interpretation of the time of applying that subdivision standard. So we're hoping to work through that. There are also two waiver requests for the planning board to make a ruling on. The waiver to allow the two curb cuts to exceed 20 feet in width. They requested two 24-foot curb cuts, and the waiver to allow two two-way access points onto North River Road. The ordinance allows for either one two-way or two one-way access points. At the last planning board meeting, the board felt that there is merit for providing the waivers, and the fire department agreed it would improve safety of the site and access for their purposes. To summarize, we recommend that the planning board make a finding on the subdivision, site plan, and special exception criteria, make a ruling on the two waiver requests, and make a final plan ruling with the conditions that are provided in the staff report. The applicant has also tried to outline those on the plan, so that it'd be clear going forward if that plan gets approved. So with that, I'd be happy to answer any specific questions.
As I understand it, the subdivision requirements are as or more stringent than site plan, special exception. Are you able to give some specific examples of where, with this specific project?
So it?
Having met, the subdivision represents meeting a higher standard than the site plan?
So the recreation open space one is probably the biggest one, but that standard does not exist in site plan. The, if you look at the spreadsheet that I had handed out, get it up on the screen. In general, the standard is, under subdivision, it says in the top box, "When reviewing any subdivision for approval, the planning board shall consider the following criteria, and before granting either approval or denial, shall determine that the proposed subdivision, condition one is will not result in underwater, air, or noise pollution." If you look at the site plan provision, it says, "In considering a site plan, the board shall make findings that the development has made provision for." So it's a little bit less standard in that the board is deciding if the developer has made provision for something versus assuring that it meets an exact standard. Special exception, as conditions prerequisite to the granting of any special exceptions, the board shall require evidence of the following. It's a softer standard than shall determine that the proposed subdivision has met. In that sense, it's a slightly lesser standard that they've provided information that they've made provision for things versus meeting an exact standard. The, I don't think it's a substantially lesser standard. Most of the same issues are covered. It's just the wording in Special Exception Site Plan, I think, allows a little bit more flexibility for the board in making those determinations. The subdivision standard is that the proposed subdivision has sufficient water available for the reasonable foreseeable, reasonably foreseeable needs of the subdivision. The special exception standard for that, that parallels that, is that the reasonable provisions have been made for things like the water, stormwater, lot spacing, lot area, driveway layout. So it's just, it's not as exact a standard. I think it provides a little more leeway for the board. There's nothing that, there's no standard in subdivision that I think is completely ignored, that the issues that they were trying to address are completely ignored in special exception. I think it's just a slightly lesser standard for the board to find that it, that it meets. Again, we believe that with the information that you'll get tonight, that they have met the burden of either subdivision or site plan, but the board has a little more latitude, I think, under Site Plan Special Exception for finding that they've made provisions for something rather than met an exact standard.
With regard to our discussion from last meeting, I think you've touched on green space already, and how reviewing the project as a site plan review changes that requirement. Something else that came up in the discussion during the board that was tied to subdivision within the floodplain, I believe, had to do with grading and fill. I know this is something that came up prior to the meeting, so is, is that addressed in site plan review? Is that still a criteria within site plan review?
I remember we discussed that. I'm looking for that particular one, so. That was one with a little lesser standard under special exception. I'm just looking for the exact wording under subdivision.
Say in the final building height for elevation?
No, in the, in the last meeting, we discussed the concept that subdivisions in the floodplain were supposed to, supposed to be sort of a minimizing of fill or regrading when possible. And I think that was tied specifically to subdivision. I wasn't able to find something specific to site plan, so I'm asking staff if they understand how that affects that, that, that topic of discussion from last meeting.
You remove all the garbage dirt, and then you pack everything.
I know what they're doing. Does the rest of the board understand? Yeah, so we, there was a provision that it should be avoided.
That it should minimize the need for filling.
Right.
Not necessarily just in the floodplain, but minimize the need for filling.
Right, and if I remember correctly, that was tied to subdivisions. And looking through Site Plan Review, I wasn't able to necessarily find that specifically, so I'm asking staff if, with their expertise, if they knew, if they had an opinion on how that would be affected.
Under site plan, there's four objectives. Site plan is the simplest standard for, for a project review. I think the one that most closely reflects that would be, it's in the second box down, SP1, Site Plan 1, "Protection of adjacent areas against detrimental or offensive use on the site by provision of adequate surface water drainage, buffers against artificial and reflected light." I think there's that one, and then there's the special exception standard 5, that I think it, it's not as specific or as strong as the subdivision standard, but it could, it's probably the one that most closely aligns with it, that reasonable provisions have been made for adequate land space, lot width, lot area, stormwater management in accordance with Section 60130114. That's the reference to the state stormwater standards, Chapter 500. Green space, driveway layout, road access. Goes on to list. It's the closest one we have, that adequate, reasonable provisions have been made for things, including grading and stormwater.
So it doesn't appear that that's addressed as stringently in site plan?
It's not as stringent in site plan as it is in subdivision.
I just wanted to make that a part of the record, because it was something we had discussed last meeting, so. Are there other questions for staff from the board members?
Yeah, I have one question, Eric. In, last time, can you just clarify, I recall we had a discussion about comp plan and whether or not this was, that the zoning is actually inconsistent with part of the comprehensive plan around the flood zone boundary. Am I remembering that correctly?
Yeah, so the, the comp plan uses a boundary that was taken from the official FEMA flood map back in 2010. That boundary was updated in 2014. One of the questions was, the developer had provided a map showing those boundaries, and we had request, we had been a sort of a parallel request, requested one from our GIS person. Rosemary was able to take the site plan, overlay it on our GIS map, so that it's referenced as closely as possible. And this is the image of that. The orange area is the 2010 floodplain boundary. And I think the point of this one was to confirm that the buildings were outside of that resource protection as it was adopted as part of that comp plan map. That is the case. I think the other question that had come up is whether or not a subsequent floodplain map adoption automatically changed our comp plan.
And so where is the 2014 line?
So the 2014 one, I can get that on GIS. The 2014 one does encroach slightly more, but I think along that line of thinking, there are allowances for filling within the floodplain, and- are allowances for filling within the floodplain and they, I lost my tab for GIS.
No, it's fine, I.
And, and they, they intend to, with the filling that's been approved and it's met all the standards, they intend to amend the FEMA map to match the new topography on the site. So that again would move the boundary back to similar.
That's the LOMR.
Yes.
Yeah, okay.
Yep.
Are there other questions from the board? Seeing none at this time, is, is staff?
I'm happy to answer questions, but I'm completed. I'm going to try to pull up the GIS just so we have it if there are other.
While we wait for that, at this time, we invite the applicant or agent for the applicant to come forward. Please start by stating your name.
Hi, my name's Jim Corbin with Surveyworks Incorporated, here with Tom Perkins of Dirgo Architectural, as well as the applicant to Millet of Westshore Landing LLC. Thank you all for the opportunity to present. If we could jump right into it, I'd like to turn to section one of the application. And a few pages in, you'll find our request in letter form, the waiver request, a waiver to subsection 15 of the City of Auburn's Code of Ordinance, Article 5, Section 60-607, off-street parking and loading to allow for two 24-wide curb cuts to access the subject parcel. That article states, or that subsection states where two or more driveways or curb cuts are constructed, the curb cuts shall not exceed 20 feet in width. We are also seeking a second waiver within this one waiver request to section 60-801 to allow for two two-way access points onto a single roadway. It is our belief that the additional driveway width and entrance allows for greater emergency vehicle turning rate I and circulation at the site. That was echoed with a response from the fire inspector, as well as staff. Next section that I'd like to jump to if we could is section seven, which is the section with all our plans in here, the second sheet in there.
Go ahead and put that up on the screen.
Yes, yes, please, which is the, the subdivision slash site plan. Based on our last meeting, there were several orders and conditions and requests to be made part of the application in the plans. We have done so on here. The first being, the applicant shall, conditions of approval, number one, the applicant shall apply for and receive a letter of map revision based on fill, LOMR-F, from, through FEMA before the issuance of a building permit. That letter will effectively revise, of course, FEMA's maps. And by way of that, we need to demonstrate that the structures on the lot will be elevated above the base flood elevation or the 100-year floodplain of that area. We do, we will be doing that, of course. The design will meet and exceed that by, on average, I believe, over seven feet. The second, conditions of approval, once final grading or foundation loading has been determined, a final geotechnical report shall be submitted prior to the issuance of a building permit. We have determined those final loadings and received a final geotechnical report from Summit Geoengineering, who did the preliminary report that you saw in our initial preliminary review application. All results were good. The, the existing soils out there will support the structures as proposed. Next sec, next condition, the building height shall be limited to 35 feet as measured from the mean of the gable. The proposed structures will be based on average mean of gable, a height of 34 feet. An addressing, number four, an addressing plan shall be provided to the addressing officer before the issuance of a building permit. I will be working with Rosemary to, to get that, of course, after, after our meetings. Number five, the owner applicant of the development and the subject parcel accepts responsibility to own, construct, and maintain the proposed section of sewer main that will connect to the public sewer system. The applicant shall acquire the necessary easements from the city to construct, maintain, and repair such private sewer lines within the right-of-way of North River Road and Northern Avenue prior to the issuance of the building permit. As you, as you know, there is no public sewer within North River Road, so we propose a private system that will feed into the public system that's just northernly from the site.
Will that require the applicant to, to cut into the current pavement?
No, that will not. North River Road was improved recently, just this last fall. During that improvement, in anticipation that this might be a desire of the applicant to develop a property, force main lines were placed under the road at that time in a section just near Northern Avenue to prevent the need for any curb cut or cut within the roadway, that new pavement. The rest of the, the, the lines will fall either within unapproved sections of the right-of-ways or with on private property. That private property being the, the site of, the site of the development.
Did the applicant pay for that extension that, that occurred during that, during that time?
He did, yes.
Just for reference, that sewer line shown on our drawing C 3.0 in your package until any plan?
And we're required, because the city has a five-year moratorium when we pave a road, because we don't want to see cuts in brand-new pavement, we're required to give abutting property owners notifications and give them time to do that, and we encourage them to, to stub utilities as part of the larger construction project so the road doesn't get cut into. The city engineer would have asked them to do that if they had any plans within the next five years.
The six conditions of approval is a standard order of conditions stating that any, any requirements or easements, conditions, burdens of the property be echoed in the other legal documents, the deeds. Number seven, the owner applicant shall obtain all applicable DEP permits prior to the issuance of the building permit. Because stormwater review has been delegated, delegated to the city within this area and for development review applications within the City of Auburn, the permits that we will be seeking with DEP are a, a permit by rule for the National Resource Protection Act, being as some of this work will, will be conducted within 75 feet of the resource. We'll be staying, of course, outside of that 25-foot buffer area, and then a general construction And then section three, if I could speak to that briefly, the character of the neighborhood. We've put together a narrative to help illustrate what exactly that, that character is. At the preliminary approval meeting, we heard clear concerns about the potential impacts to the neighborhood that could result with the, from the development of this project. We agree that formerly wooded and undeveloped lots appearance will change, that the formerly wooded and undeveloped lots appearance will change substantially. But our design strives to incorporate the residential riverside fabric of the area with our multifamily buildings. These residences incorporate architectural features concurrent with New England area homes. Landscaping and indigenous species and maximizing the green space opportunities on the site are also part of our plans, and our design intent is very much to mimic the current look and feel of the North River Road community. The contention is that the neighborhood in which the subject parcel resides is predominantly a single-family dwelling residential neighborhood, and that proposed use would adversely affect the character of said neighborhood. The city does not have a definition for a neighborhood, nor does it have a map delitting the various neighborhoods within its limits. What the city does have, however, are well-defined zoning districts and a comprehensive plan that creates a framework for managing the city's future development. The subject parcel lies within the general business district, GB1. The GB1 district is intended to include commercial uses serving both the city and the region, and allows for, among other uses, residential dwelling uses permitted in the multifamily suburban district. The multifamily suburban district is intended to stabilize and protect medium-to-high-density residential areas by providing for a varied denser urban pattern made suitable to the needs of the population by encouraging a range of dwelling types. The next closest zoning district within this area, or next closest zoning district aside from the general business district to the subject parcel is this multifamily suburban district. Eric, if you don't mind, could we go to section three in there where we talk about, yes, if you keep scrolling down. This is the current zoning map, excuse me, this is the current zoning map for the area, the orange being the general business district and the green being the multifamily suburban Based on current zoning districts, it appears that the subject parcel lies within a transitional commercial to residential neighborhood that promotes high-density residential development. If we want to scroll through the rest of the maps in this section here, these are parcels, I believe these are parcels within 1,000 feet of the subject parcel. And to demonstrate what, what's being, what uses are going on in that neighborhood, I have a spreadsheet below that highlights, yellow being residential uses, red being commercial uses, and green being the multifamily uses going, happening within that 1,000 feet of the subject parcel. We do more of the same narrowing down to the parcel with another map here indicating. Well, to speak back to that a little bit, you can see here that though there's a lot of yellow showing residential uses in that 1,000 feet and 500 feet of the parcel, if you take an aggregate of all those units within, within that area, those that can be designated a single family, it's about 25 to 30 units, where those units that are within multifamily housing far exceed that.
Are those current multifamily housing units, or does that also include the proposed units from this project?
That is just the current multifamily units. And the single family in there also includes a duplex, because I believe the city have used those as more of the single family use. The last plan depicts how these uses are spatially represented and scaled within the neighborhood. If you could scroll down a few more pages, I believe. Right here. This plan demonstrates how a multifamily development within the subject parcel would fit right at home within its surrounding neighborhood. Aside from technical compliance enumerated above, we also feel that this development aligns with the other apartment buildings and multifamily dwellings located on the next street over that have been part of this riverside neighborhood for many years. Those being the riverside apartments and northern, and other apartments off of Northern You can see those are adjacent to the subject parcel. On the last plan I want to look at is the pre, the post-development treatment plan that was made part of our stormwater report. And then last section, one of the last plans in your application. I think it is the last plan, the last sheet is some details to support it. Yes, yep. And what I want to demonstrate with this plan is how the fill will be not only 25 feet off of the resource or the, the river here, but it's also outside of the floodway that's a, it's more, the floodway is established by FEMA as a do-not-touch zone, basically. And that's where our, our limits are, and we exceed that in some areas as well, not into the floodway, but away from it. And also shows the retaining wall that will support the structures off of that, that floodway. With that, if there's any questions?
Are there questions for members of the board? Go for it.
So you're saying that the finished grade will be higher so that we don't have a 1987 flood like we had in New Auburn?
The, the 100-year floodplain for this area, I'm going to just skip to my existing conditions plan really quick so I can get these numbers right. But the high end of the site, we're at an elevation of 177.25 for that floodplain.
Right.
And the structures are elevated at, for finished floor elevation, 186.5. So well above that floodplain. And not only that, but that grading will be protected as well from erosion with our measures shown on the erosion control plans as well as that, that retaining wall.
Seeing no other questions, thank you very much.
Thank you.
At this time, I would entertain a motion to open the public input section of the hearing.
So moved.
I have a motion and a second. All those in favor? At this time, we would invite people from the public who wishes to speak on this topic to come forward. Please start by stating your name and address clearly into the microphone.
Sarah Raymond, I live at 200 North River Road, and I have a quick, can I ask questions or, I have a quick question for the special exceptions piece, was that online?
If you, if you ask questions, we will make sure that they get answered.
Okay, so the special exceptions piece, I did not see that change online, was that originally on the, like, version that was put online? Because I would have liked to have looked at that, just because when you were looking and talking about fill, he mentioned water and runoff, and I don't think those are parallel, and I'd really like to look and see if there's more about that, because one of the things that I was going to talk about today was this whole idea of filling and grading, and so if that's a moot point.
Well, so to, normally we wouldn't answer questions, but given, given the nature of the question, I think it's reasonable to answer. We have a document in front of us from a lawyer at Bernstein Insurance dated January 30th, so, and that. 30th, so, and that's the date of the memorandum. We received this quite recently, and that, and this memorandum is the memorandum clarifying whether or not this should legally be reviewed as a subdivision or a site plan. We were previously using the subdivision standard. I do have my copy of chapter 60 in front of me. It's not an ideal situation, but if you would like, I can let you look through the site plan section of the ordinance, if there are other members of the public that would like to speak.
Well, so I guess I'll just make my argument, and then maybe we can look at it after, so...
It's reasonable.
One of the big points I was going to bring up, I'm going to, I'm just going to start and read my letter now, because I'm going to get off track, I'm sorry. "I realize that what I have to say really won't change anything, but I need to say it, is the responsibility of the planning board to make sure that prior to approval that proposals meet all state and local rules." I know I've brought up this before, but I'm going to bring it up again. In the general requirements section, it specifically says extensive grading and filling shall be avoided as much as possible, so this is the point where I'm not sure if this applies anymore. This was discussed at the last meeting, because it was basically stated that nothing could be done about this, because they received the fill permit before applying for approval for building. I disagree, because this circumvented the laws by applying for the fill permit with the supposed intention of just fill. They knew they were going to build apartments there. And so this clause says that you cannot do, like, there should not be major filling and grading. They knew they were going to put apartments there. As soon as the gentleman started clear-cutting the land, we went down and said, hey, what's going on here? He says, oh, there's apartments going in. They knew that before they even built it, there wasn't even filled, they were just cutting down those trees. And so that really goes around the laws and the rules, and I think it's your job at the planning board to say, we're not going to accept and allow companies to do this, right? Because apparently it's been a problem recently with other things, you mentioned this at the last meeting. And it is your job as a planning board to set the precedent that we're not just going to let people sort of circumvent the law and then go ahead and do what they want to do. And lastly, I'm really concerned, so this last building still needs to be filled, right? Has that filled, was that fill permit part of the original fill permit? That's my question. Because that last building on the end is not filled, that land has not been filled, the trees have been cut down, but it hasn't been filled. And so has, was that part of the original fill permit, is my question, because then again, more filling in order to get it out of the flood zone. The other piece with the flood zone is that, yes, okay, so you raise that land, but the other half of the road is going to be flooded, right? And possibly even the part to Northern Ave, so now you have all these apartment buildings stranded. They cannot get off the road because it's flooded. Back in 87, Northern Ave, I don't even know if Northern Ave was there yet, I remember being stranded on our road, we didn't leave that whole week, right? Like, we couldn't leave our house, because we were stuck there. So now you have all these other units stuck there instead of maybe four or five houses. All right. And let me see, the arguments in regards to the neighborhood, so I thought the table was quite interesting, but you can put, you can make any chart go in your favor. And so by showing all of these multi, yes, those are a couple apartment buildings that are there, so of course it's going to be a larger number of multi, but the number of actual buildings is not more than the number of single-family houses in that area. So you can skew the numbers any way you want. The other piece is that those apartments on the hill in the woods, you know, behind the screen of woods, do not have access to North River Road directly, right? They go through Northern Ave, so to say that is all similar and the same, it's not the same, they don't have access. They're set apart, they're up on a hill, if you look on Google Maps, you can't even see those buildings. If you get on, like, the ground view and walk through, nah, you can't see them. So when you look at an aerial view, yes, maybe it looks like they're there, but when you're down on that road, they're not. It's quiet, it's peaceful. So adding those apartments would not fit. Again, there's no sidewalks, there's no safe way to get around. I had an argument about the in-lu, but that doesn't make any sense anymore after your discussion. Lastly, you keep talking, everyone keeps talking about how the city wants to develop this area. If the city, I feel like if the city was serious about developing this area, they would have maybe, instead of just repaving the road, they would have put sidewalks in, they would have put septic in, because what, who wants to be on a road with no septic? Nobody else on that road has septic. And there's people still on that road that have wells, because this road has never been paid attention to. Let me see. Okay, that is all I have, because the reality of the situation is this is probably going to go through regardless. But it is your job as a planning board to look out for the interest of the people that are living there, to look out for the interest of our land and environment, and to look at the fact that you can't just go around the rules that are in place and do what you want, and then say, oh yeah, after, right? It just doesn't work that way, at least not for me. I think that is it. Sorry, thank you.
Thank you, and I'll make sure that we address specifically the question regarding permits when we have our deliberations. Is there anyone else from the public that would like to speak on this topic? Seeing no one, I'd seek a motion from the board to close the public input section of the hearing.
So moved.
Just a motion and a second, all those in favor. First order of business, have all the fill permits been received for this project that would be required to bring the property up to grade?
So the, all of the fill permits required for the fill that's been placed to date, if there's additional fill to need, that they need, the applicant can probably tell us that, and they would need to either amend the existing fill permit if they're going to go beyond what was permitted by that, or apply for a new one. I think we can ask the applicant if they have all the fill on site that they need at this point in time.
And with regard to the fill, because it was a question, I was leafing through to It is, yes, it is under section 60-1365 general requirements, and it is under the major subdivision final plan, so, let's see, section 60-1365 subsection two, the final sentence says, "A street and lot layout shall be adopted to the topography, extensive grading and filling shall be avoided as far as possible." So with regard to that concern that we had last time, it looks like that is specific to a major subdivision final plan, and not necessarily a site plan review. So I hope that answers at least two of the questions that were raised.
Deliberation amongst the board? Questions, clarification that we'd like to seek?
As I was going through, I was struck by condition number one, that we imposed on the preliminary The assumption is that the buildings and structures would exceed the base flood elevation, which is the delineating line for the floodplain and the FEMA maps, but that's not necessarily explicit in that condition. I'm saying it now, because sometimes if I don't say something, I'll forget to say it. So as we move forward with thinking, if we were, if we keep that condition, and my guess is that the board's pleasure would be to do so, that we amend it to also say something to show that the, to say something to the effect of, to show that the buildings and structures will exceed the BFE or base flood elevation as determined by FEMA. Basically, all we're asking for is, in condition one, is a letter of map revision, but we're not saying what we want the revision to show. And I think it's in our best interest that if we really want, if, because that has been an important factor in the deliberation on the board, that if that's what we want, that's why we want that condition, we should include that in the condition.
Other discussion and questions that board members have?
I have a question for staff. So with the private sewage infrastructure that the developer will be building to serve the project, is there any chance that if that malfunctions, some cost will be borne by the Water and Sewer Corporation, the public entity?
So if, if there's a private pump station with a private line, there's absolutely no chance that the sewer district would have to pay for any of that cost from where it connects into their main. The initial install would be paid for entirely by the developer, and they'd be responsible for maintaining it from their building up to where it dumps into the main. So sometimes you'll have, you know, if the developer proposed a pump station, the sewer district could say, we would prefer that you install a larger, more powerful pump station that can accept waste from other people. In that case, the district will typically require you to also pay upfront for a capital replacement for that as part of them accepting responsibility for future maintenance. But it sounds like the proposal here is for this to be a private system crossing North River Road and tying into the public main on Northern. I'm not sure why that keeps flashing, so I apologize for that, but there should be no cost to the sewer district, and they should pick up a rate-paying customer.
To follow that specific question, the condition on the proposed site plan, condition number five, the owner-applicant of this development and the subject parcel accepts responsibility to own, construct, and maintain the proposed section of sewer that will connect to the public sewer system. Is that, where does the public sewer system begin, and where does the private system begin? Where do they intersect, I guess?
And we can ask the applicant, if for some reason I'm wrong on this, but I think the public system exists as of today, and they will run a private line until they're able to connect into the gravity public system. My assumption would be they'd have to go to the top of a hill on Northern.
So my question, so there is a forced-feed sewer line currently below grade, is that publicly or privately owned? I guess is more my pointed question.
I know they've been working with the district, I believe that the public one is a gravity non-forced main, and they're going to install a forced main to feed into the gravity publicly-owned system. But the whole forced part of it will be privately owned and maintained.
Other deliberation, questions? There's no deliberation or questions I would ask that a member of the board propose a
Well, then I'll step up and make the motion to approve the project. I will make a motion to approve the final plan to construct three 12-unit apartment buildings on North River Road and the general business shoreline zoning districts with the following conditions. One, the applicant shall apply for and receive either their map, letter of map revision based on fill LOMR-F through FEMA, or a flood hazard development permit with the city before the issuance of a building permit, and that this will show, that they will exceed the base flood elevation with that. Two, once final grading and foundation loading has been determined, a final geotechnical report shall be submitted prior to the issuance of a building permit. Three, the building height should be limited to 35 feet as measured from the mean of the gable. Four, an addressing plan shall be provided to the addressing officer before the issuance of a building permit. Five, the owner-applicant of this development and the subject parcel accepts responsibility to own, construct, and maintain the proposed section of sewer main that will connect to the public sewer system. The applicant shall acquire the necessary easements from the city to construct, maintain, and repair such private sewer lines within the right-of-way of North River Road and Northern Avenue prior to the issuance of a building permit. Six, the development is to be constructed in accordance with section 60-897. This condition shall be included in any deed, lease, purchase, and sale agreement, or document transferring or expressing interest to transfer any interest in real estate or structure, including but not limited to a timeshare interest. The municipality may enforce any violation of this construction requirement, the fact will also be included in the deed or any other document previously described. Seven, the owner-applicant shall obtain all applicable DEP permits prior to the issuance of a building permit.
I think because there are waivers involved, it would be prudent to include that your motion either recognizes or does not recognize the waiver requests and grant them. There are two waiver requests, one for section 60-60715 to waive a requirement to allow for two 24-foot curb cuts, and one for section 60-8012 to allow for two two-way access, this is onto a single roadway instead of one.
As a point of order, can I just include those?
Yes, you may.
So I would support granting both of the two requested waiver requests. Thank you.
Could I ask for an additional friendly amendment?
Oh, certainly.
And only because this is an odd situation that we find ourselves in, that stating whether or not we believe the plan meets the requirements for site plan review, I say that only because Eric asked specifically for us to mention that.
Well, I, glancing through, it certainly seems like the site plan review is a lesser standard, therefore the standard is met.
Okay, would you be willing to include that as part of your motion?
Yes. So as a final friendly amendment from the...
I apologize.
That we would also, in the motion, recognize that the project application has met the site plan and special exception conditions as well.
Can, before we move on, can I just ask a question? I thought last time we landed on an LOMR and not a flood hazard development permit?
Oh.
So in the front part of the staff report, I should have asked this earlier, sorry, in the front part of the staff report, it says that the applicant has agreed to do an LOMR and not, but the language that we put forward.
This is true.
So I'd like a friendly amendment to strike the portion on the flood hazard development permit.
I think that that would be meeting the intent of the board. Mr. Engler, are you willing to make that friendly amendment?
I am.
Okay. Are there any other friendly amendments to the motion before we move to a second? Is there a second on the motion?
Second.
There's a second, is there a discussion?
I will say that I think the development does meet some particular goals of the city, specifically to increase market rate housing and to increase that market rate housing closer to the center of town rather than at the outskirts of town. However, I would like it noted that the project does so in a manner that, similar to those we've seen prior, in sort of taking action prior to actual approval by the board, and that it would be prudent for the board as we move forward to think about possibly remedying that, so that we have clearer direction as we move forward on future projects. But that's just my two cents.
I agree.
Is there any other discussion on the motion, deliberation? Seeing none at this time, I'll take a vote.
Seeing none at this time, I'll take a vote. All those in favor of the motion? Against? I'm saying none being submersion passes. Uh, six, or I'll say unanimously. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
The next item on our agenda is a discussion to consider adopting language for solar energy generating systems in the agriculture and resource protection zone. This is not labeled as a public hearing and as such, uh, the board will not normally entertain public comment. However, when the board has, uh, done its discussion, I will allow the board to determine whether or not they, they would like to hear from members of the public that have come tonight. So, uh, this one is really being driven, uh, by staff. We haven't talked about this on the board except to say that we really wanted to look at, um, the industrial zone and sort of wrap our heads around basic solar, um, regulations before we considered any other zone.
Is this a question of height of structures and that, that sort of thing?
Yeah, yeah, this is, uh, this is, um, so we, we previously went through that within the industrial district. We sent some, uh, ordinance language to council, um, and now we're, 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 uh, sort of just starting the discussion about whether or not we think it would be appropriate for the agriculture and resource protection zone. If it was, how could it be appropriate? Where would it not be appropriate? What, what, what kind of regulations do we think might be, um, pertinent? And again, uh, for the board, this is really sort of the first time we discussed, discussed this. So, um, Eric, is there information that you, uh, wanted to present to us on the topic to get the discussion rolling or?
Nothing, um, nothing beyond what, uh, basically was sent out. Megan had done a, uh, staff report on this item. Um, the council will consider the ordinance that the planning board recommended for solar standards in the industrial zone at their February 27th meeting. Um, and they did confirm in workshop that, uh, they would like feedback from the board on whether or not, um, solar installations are appropriate in other zoning districts, including the ag zone. Um, the reason that, uh, I think the ag zone is coming up is we do have a lot of interest in, um, projects in the ag zone, um, from, um, some existing farmers as well as, uh, solar developers that see, uh, the ag zone as an opportunity for, for solar, uh, development, um, and some of them in partnership with, with existing landowners. The, um, I think the board was smart, uh, sort of tactically to tackle the industrial zone first and try to get a framework together that addresses the general impacts of solar. And then I think it would be a good approach to, um, take those standards that you used in the industrial zone and tailor them, uh, if you deem it appropriate for solar to be in the ag zone, um, tailor them to minimize impacts on uses that you would expect or encourage in the agricultural zone that are different than the industrial zone. The, um, staff report outlines a number of questions. Um, the board, I think, on their draft had worked towards making sure that we didn't become more restrictive for solar installations that are serving a principal use on the property. So if you have a homeowner that wants to install solar to power their home, that's not the subject of this ordinance. Um, those are different than the commercial solar projects that are generating power beyond the principal use.
Can I ask, so with regard to principal use, if, um, and, I don't know, let's say I had, let's say I was in the industrial zone, I had a light manufacturing, um, facility. And I installed a sizable solar, there was a sizable solar installation, um, but I was using that solely for the benefit of my, the, the commercial use on the property. Is that, would that be subject to the commercial solar standards or would that be principal use standards?
I'm looking for that specific language. I think what we ended up with was a one acre threshold that was trying to capture those that smaller than one acre would likely serve most principal uses. When you get above the one acre, if Tambrands, for example, wanted to power their factory with a solar installation, it could conceivably be a very large solar installation. I think in the, in the applicability section that was part of the, uh, previously recommended standard, um, if you were doing a roof-mounted solar array, it could be larger than the acre. So Tambrands wants to cover their roof with solar panels, they could do that without becoming subject to the special exception standard. Um, and D, um, there is the exception, so ground-mounted as well, solar energy generating systems intended to satisfy the electrical needs of the principal use of the lot, provided the owner-operator complies with FAA requirements if in the airport overlay zone. So it looks like you could exceed the acre if the purpose of the array is to supply power to the, the principal use under the, the draft that was previously prepared.
So in past discussions, I think what's been, um, I, what I think the, what I think has worked well, um, is when each of us sort of gets an opportunity to kind of say how we're feeling about this, um, pose specific questions, and that's really been helpful, I think, and correct me, Eric, that's been helpful for staff to be able to, to put together sort of a, um, a, a framework from which, uh, we move from just sort of like, what are our questions and what might this look like to, okay, these are the questions you asked, here are your answers, so what are you going to do with these answers?
Yeah, the, the hope is to help. If there, if there are things that are different impacts that you would perceive differently in the ag zone than you did in the industrial zone, um, we'd like to hear those things so we could shell out a draft that you guys could have a public hearing on at a future meeting.
Um, to that end, is there anybody that would like to start sort of on their impressions and questions that they have as we look at this possibly for the ag zone? Mr. Dubal?
So, yeah, uh, thank you. Um, I, so considering the purpose of the ag zone or the, not, it's not a charge, you can have a charge of a, of an ordnance, of a zone, a, uh, land zone, but, um, it, environmental, uh, conservation is one aspect of that. So in moving forward with any solar regulation there, I would want to be sure that we were careful about, um, not violating those principles that behind, that are behind the definition of the ag zone. Um, so I'd wanna, I'd want us to think about, uh, clearing land, whether or not that can be done. Um, I'd want us to think about, uh, taking up prime soils with, um, solar arrays because it's more profitable. Um, I'd want to know about environmental impact of, uh, solar panels on, um, various different ecosystems, right? Um, and I'd also want to think about, uh, in a total land area sense, do we want to restrict how much land area within the ag zone can be, um, dedicated to solar power generation? Those are just the things that hit me initially. So in those area, in those ways, I think it is different than the, than the industrial zone.
Um, I think I share all of Mr.'s concerns and, um, you know, I was just thinking of how, we call it the ag zone, but in reality, there is, there's a lot of forest out there and a lot of wildlife. Um, and so, you know, whereas in the industrial zone, um, in theory, given the distinct goals of the zone, it might be appropriate to clear a large section of current forest land to build this kind of, uh, solar development. It really wouldn't be appropriate in the ag zone and, um, there, I, I, I have to plead ignorance around all the sort of environmental, um, impact studies and that kind of stuff. I'd be concerned about the impact on the water and the wildlife as well as the actual land. Um, we didn't, I don't recall being too concerned, we talked about the actual installation itself and when we talked about the industrial zone, we didn't talk about connections to the grid. And I think particularly for a larger installation, there really might be some infrastructure required. It's not just, you know, run a quick cable over to the, the power lines along the road. Um, so I'd want to make sure that there weren't negative impacts from that. Um, I don't think there's anything that explicitly prohibits this in the ordinance as developed for the industrial zone, but I'd want to make sure that, um, you know, that there could still be, uh, agricultural uses of the land perhaps, and that we make sure that we draft the ordinance so that there's no pro- prohibition on, you know, pasturing animals in there if that could work commingling agricultural and, um, uh, power generation purposes. Uh, finally, I just wanted to say that, um, I've been on the, on the planning board as an associate member mostly for almost a year now, and I've heard a lot, I think there's a theme of a lack of engagement from the community and not always hearing ample notice about things. So, um, just emphasizing that there should be good community engagement, particularly with landowners and residents of the ag zone here.
When you have a farmer who owns 150 acres and he plants potatoes on it, and to be able to harvest those potatoes, you get 30,000 to 50,000 pounds of potatoes per acre, it takes a lot of machinery, a lot of lights to be able to clean and sort and bag those So if he has a field that he could put the solar panels on, why not? It helps him cut his electric bill, gives him a little extra profit so he can spend it in town, so he can go out to dinner, whatever else. I think this is a good thing. So.
Yeah, overall, um, to me, it makes sense, um, when I think of farming, I tend to think of, uh, extraction of resources and that it's separate from something like mining because mining is not, ma- mining is literally extraction. You're taking and you're just taking it and that's it. And when you're done, there's, there's nothing left. And when I think of agriculture and forestry, I tend to think of a, a, a more sustainable harvest of natural resources. Um, so as I think about solar, I'd want to, um, in my mind, be assured that that's really what we're doing, that, um, in converting a specific land to be able to, um, gather this natural resource, that we're not sort of putting a stop on that land's ability to gather other resources. Uh, in my mind, that's sort of the hallmark of agriculture is that, is that, um, you know, the, a farmer uses a specific piece of land or forester uses a specific piece of land, um, today or this year or for the next five years for one particular crop or product, but then doing so, they don't exclude or preclude their ability to use that land, uh, to generate a different product. Um, so I'd, I'd like whatever we move forward to be sort of in keeping with that sort of agricultural tradition. Um, I really like this idea of prime soils. We have so few prime, we have so much ag land and so much of it is actually comprised of prime agricultural soils that there's no way I want anything going on soil that can be used for vegetable or ground crop production. Um, I don't, I don't want anything going there that is going to stop that from happening. Uh, which sort of brings me to the idea of clearing the land, I guess. I sort of take a different tact on that. So much of our ag land is forested, um, which actually in my mind presents a problem because it's so expensive to reclaim forested land to open field in that, um, as part of the avoidance of prime soils, I myself would be very open to the idea of, um, timber harvesting an area that is not an area of primed soils necessarily, um, in order to put, uh, a solar installation or even better, an area of primed soil that is forested, which is incredibly expensive for a farmer to, to, to go bring back to, to farm field. Um, but that could be cleared, uh, as a solar project with the end game that 30 to 40 years down the road, there may no longer be a solar, solar farm there, but that now we've reopened what were primed soils that were locked up and, and too expensive to unlock otherwise. So, may, there's, I'd like to see us, not necessarily that that's the way that has to be, but I, I'd like to sort of think about that possibility, like how i- is it possible for us to allow, um, cutting of timber to actually open up some areas of primed soils that are currently closed off because they're, they're timbered. Um, I think the gr- grid infrastructure is really important. I think, different from the industrial zone, when we think about the industrial zone, we assume that that area has a carrying capacity for industry, it's in the industrial zone, right? Um, that's not necessarily the case when it comes to the, uh, the ag zone and the more rural areas, parts of the city. And that as part of our discussion, it might be a good idea to think about what grid infrastructure, uh, currently exists, what would need to exist, uh, for, for, um, projects of what size and think about that as possibly, um, a determinant of where these things might or might not go. Maybe we look at it and we say that's not important at all, but, um, and of course, I, yeah, we need to understand the environmental impacts of anything that we're doing out there, but, um, those, those are sort of my thoughts as I'm, as I'm thinking about this moving forward.
Uh, in addition to, to what's already been said, the two for me, uh, would be not just the total area that, that a panel array might have, but the density of the panels. So if they're very packed in, then it's almost a canopy, uh, that prevents, you know, soil from continuing. It's, it's normal course. Um, but then, uh, like in residential areas, uh, what would happen, what would the remedy be for someone who has a, a panel array set up, but in a budding landowner maintains trees that put shade on the panels? What's the remedy there? How, how is that mitigated in some way? So those would be a couple of concerns we can see addressed as we continue to talk about it.
Uh, I wasn't here for the industrial zone discussion. Uh, was permanence or lifespan of the solar displays discussed in that?
Uh, it was and we had a, um, I forget specifically what we had. In, in the ordinance, uh, there was language regarding the decommissioning of, of those and, um, when we require them to be decommissioned, we had a, a standard regarding, um, uh, regular operations such that, you know, the, an owner couldn't say, "Well, the, you know, I've got a thousand panels and 20% of them are still working, so I don't have to pay to take this down." The way, the way the ordinance was written was such that if you're, the entirety of your, if you're not, if, if it's not operating the way it's supposed to be operating, your choices are either to make it operate that way or, or to decommission it. So, I don't know if that answers your question, but-
Well, in regards to the long-term land uses, you said like bringing back, uh, good soils to use, would, would that be something where you would have a, a timeline where you would expect to decommission the solar array and expect to start a, start reclaiming the soils or would it be just, uh, general, uh, intent?
No, I think that's a good question. I think that's the sort of question we would need to talk to industry experts and try to understand what, if we saw one of these installations go in within the next, next three to five years, what would be- installations go in within the next, next three to five years, what would be, what is the expected lifespan and what, what does it look like? So that's a really good question. I think that's something we should add to our list of questions.
I know the return of investment kind of timeframe is generally 20 years, at least for residential panels, but.
Would the board at this time like to hear from members of the public? I'll take a general consensus, because this is not a hearing, this is not going to require a motion, but since everyone's head seems to be nodding yes, the board is going to invite anyone from the public that sort of wants to give input in terms of brainstorming questions or ideas that they think will help the, the board as we begin our discussion on this topic. Please come forward and start by stating your name and address into the mic as these meetings are recorded and it's a matter of public record.
Good evening. My name is Palmer Moore, and I'm, work with a company named Nexamp, and we're currently talking to a number of landowners in this particular zoning district. So I don't have an address to provide, but I just wanted to give you the context. So thank you very much for providing this opportunity to provide some, some comment. It's great to see these amendments already being considered and the conversation that we just heard, I think saw a lot of really good thoughts being considered early on in the process, which is great. So I'm, as somebody who's been in the solar industry for over a decade and we've done a large number of projects with agricultural landowners across the entire Northeast, happy to field any questions that might be helpful to the board as you consider this. I would just speak generally that I think some great points that were brought up just now in conversation had to do with a little bit of competing interest, right? So we've got a resource that we want to protect. There's a, there's a agriculture area, there's some high-value soils within that area, and also some, some forested area. And I know, I think in this zoning district, you're over 70% forested, right? So it's a significant area of forest in that same area. And so two different ecologies and how to suitably protect the two, and, and having to potentially consider trading one for the other. And so I think generally, you know, when we've worked with agricultural landowners in the past, it's rare that you run into a landowner who, who uses 100% of their property. So there's, there's some portion of their property that is of value to them, and they are extracting value in, in the form of agriculture, be it crops or otherwise. And, and, and solar is looked at as a component to the overall use of their land, but not meant to compete with that primary source of, of revenue that they already receive from their agricultural use. And so, you know, typically what we're doing is, is finding a portion of that property that is, is not high value to them, but because it is not currently high value to them, locating solar there adds another source of value to them that allows them to focus on their core business better and in a more sustainable way for the future. And so that's, that's the ideal, right, is that, is you're able to find that, that perfect synthesis and locate portions of the property where you're not competing with food crop, but, but growing alongside of it and supporting it and helping it make, make it more robust. And, and so I guess, you know, one thing I wanted to just highlight, I know we're working with some landowners who do have properties with areas that do have designations for soils of significance. And, you know, the one thing I would say there is, you know, we, we come in and depending on how you define how these projects are deployed, it's, it's, it's quite a low-impact type of development for these areas. And so, you know, if you think about topsoil and if you're, if you're ensuring that the topsoil must stay in place for that development to occur, then what you're really doing by putting a solar project there is guaranteeing that that topsoil is going to stay there for the next 20, 30, 40 years without any sort of degradation to its value. And in fact, if it's left just to sit, by just the nature of sitting, it's going to accumulate more nutrients over time and even grow in its, its value and its ability to feed future uses of that property once the soil, once the solar project has come and gone. So I would just throw that out there as a consideration, I think, when you're talking about the, the competing considerations of protecting farm soils versus protecting contiguous tracts of forest land. If that area isn't currently being farmed or being farmed for, you know, just sort of basic needs, maybe not even food crop, it's a prime soil area, then, then one way to potentially look at solar is it's a, it's a basic development protection for that prime soil for the next several decades. There's some independent studies out there that talk about that, you know, if you want to protect soil, the best way to do so is to do nothing to it. You know, one of the comments we just heard was farming is an extraction of resources, but in a sustainable way, but it does extract from the land where it, where it seeks to grow food, crops and other agricultural uses. And so if you're not doing that extraction, but extend basically maintaining that soil in that condition and that location for, for decades to come, then it'll certainly do no harm to that soil and only add to its, its value over time. So I just wanted to, to mention that perspective in, in sort of consideration of those, those two competing interests. And then if there's any questions that I can answer, just from having worked with solar projects over a number of years, I'm happy to do so.
The bigger question would be, generally when the board's undertaking these sorts of things, we develop these sort of preliminary questions for ourselves, staff puts something together. We often invite people in the industry. Would you be willing to come back at a later time if the board had specific questions? To be able to answer those questions as someone who's involved in the industry, is that something that you, I know you're here tonight and I appreciate that, but is it the sort of thing that you can, you can come back at a later date if we have questions or?
Oh, absolutely. Yeah, yeah. You know, we're, we're happy to attend any of these future meetings and be able to provide context as, as it might be helpful.
Yeah, generally if we want specific information, we send it, invite well in advance.
Sure.
We would ask ahead of time. Thank you very much.
Okay, thank you.
Is there anyone else that would like to, to sort of add some input or?
Good evening. Kathy Shaw, Valley View Farms, Sopers Mill Road. I really appreciate the attention and the very valid questions and comments that you folks have made tonight regarding this potential application in our agricultural resource and conservation zone. I personally have probably a 40-acre parcel on my farm that really is just rough pasture. So this could be possibly another excellent use for this land that I really can't farm. I can put my sheep and my goats on it, but I can't really do much else with it. So I am also concerned about our soils of statewide significance and, but I think this could be a good way of using other parts of people's farms that don't generate a lot of revenue and can be a consistent effort trying to keep them open. So, thank you.
Thank you. Yeah, I'd like to add, as I was listening, it struck me that we always talk about how much forest land there is in our ag zone and how much more there is now than there was at the adoption of the current, or not, no longer the current language, but the language that held most previous to the, previous to the most recent changes. And that the reason that land became forested is because it wasn't being used and it wasn't particularly good for certain things. And so it just went fallow. And this might be a good way to prevent additional land from sort of, I, I know everyone thinks about land being forested as, as wonderful and it's great if you're a forester, but if you're a farmer, you know, 40 acres of open land is great. If you're a row crop farmer, 40 acres of forested land is a nightmare. It's not, you know, it's like, so, it seems like it might be a good way to actually maintain some of our actual agricultural land for possible future agriculture, like landbank it. And one thing else that struck me is if we do something like that, we might want to consider the concept in the ag zone of a sunset clause or requirements for continuation. Because if, if part of the idea as we move forward is to sort of landbank land by using it for these solar arrays, you know, you, you landbank it so you can take it out of the bank at some point. So we're going to, if, if that's one of the, the trees that we're barking at, we'll need to be thinking about how do we, how do we take that land back out of the, out of that bank? So that's one thing that struck me. But is there anything else that, anyone else would like to add for Eric after hearing public input, public comments? Do you feel like you have enough, Eric or staff will have enough to, to take the language from the industrial zone and if not, draft something, at least identify which areas we'll need to look at in order to answer some of the questions that we're asking?
We, we can certainly do that with the information that I have. I think that'll, that'll be easy to shell out and outline where we still have some questions that I think the board really needs to weigh on. One thing that I just wanted to clarify is Steve Martelli had mentioned the electrical use on a farm. They use a lot of energy, whether that's fuel or electricity. It sounds like there's general consensus that generating power for the use of the principal, the principal use of that property, like the farm or the house, that should be pretty widely permitted. And I could structure a draft that way. Safe. And it's certainly not a final version. You have another chance to take a look at it. And then when you get to the point of commercial where you're going, you're selling power, the purpose of the project is to sell power, that's when we would trigger these new standards, I think, for, that we're talking about creating.
I have a question about one of the boards on the city. Where are we with the Agriculture Committee? I ask only because I know the requirement is that there be at least one person who's involved or was involved in forestry as a profession or professionally involved and also professionally involved in agriculture. If those people have been individual, have been identified by the council, this might be a good first assignment for those two individuals. We could possibly ask them to come here once we have a basic working draft and discuss some of the, any of the pitfalls they might see in that, given their, given their professional backgrounds. I don't know how the board would feel about something like that, but lean on our in-house experts, you know?
Well, yeah, definitely. And to, in, in addition to that, is there a role for the Conservation Commission in thinking about this? Like, I don't, I don't see those two things as working separately, but maybe together.
Yeah, I would think, I would think that we would probably want to ask for feedback from the Conservation Commission. I don't know if we'd want to wait. As I think about how we've done things in the past, it has worked well for us to wait until we have a draft of something and then ask for their opinion on that draft, only I think because it helps us to get specific feedback as opposed to sort of open feedback. Not that there's less value in open feedback, but if we're inclined to go a specific direction, it's worked well for us in the past to wait, to at least provide some direction or, or insight into where we're going so that someone can come in and say, "Yeah, that's great." Or, "No, you guys are way off base."
Yeah, I hear you. I, I guess, I feel like we've thrown out some kind of basic, like, research questions at this point, which would be along the lines of the kinds of things they might think of. But yeah, I see your point. I mean, if we get into this stuff and then working into a draft, we can always forward it to them.
Yeah, and I, I guess, and this is the teacher in me. Sometimes if you ask too many people their opinion really early in the process, a lot of people feel like they were not listened to. Whereas if you ask a lot of people, once there's direction, it's easier to sort of take that feedback because of their feedback is more pointed and it leaves fewer people with that feeling like, "Oh, well, I had a great idea at the beginning and no one listened to it." And I don't know, it's just a personal, personal preference.
I want, I want to clarify something for Eric. Eric, all that power that the farmer generates on his property, he's not going to use it all the time, all right? Probably eight months out of the year, it'll be producing power and going into the grid. And in two to three, four months, he's going to be in harvest time when he needs that extra power for his own use. So I just want to clarify that.
Well, that brings up something that we're going to need to discuss, that we didn't discuss when we looked at the industrial zone, and that is how the contracts are going to be written for these. What are the, what are, so what you're describing would be sort of akin to me putting solar panels on my house. I have incredible square footage and awesome sun at my house. There's no way I would use it all in the summer. I'm going to be pushing most of that out, right? But, you know, I didn't have a, I didn't have a, I didn't have a, I didn't have a solar company come in and work with me who owns those panels and whom I'm purchasing the power from, right? I'm producing my own power and then because I have access, it gets pushed out to the grid. That's a very different situation, I think, than what we're talking about when we talk about commercial. We're talking about, okay, this is on, this, this, this could be on a farmer's land, but the farmer is not directly tied into this project. They're tied into the grid itself, right? Maybe they work out a deal with the developer and they get sort of a, a break or, or credit for having it there, but those are two different sorts of things, which, and you sort of bringing that up, that's going to have to be on our radar. Like, what does that look like? Which, which one of those is commercial and which one of those is not, right?
Because residential, you, you don't, you don't get money back for your excess generation from solar, right? That's the, is that the current state? That's my understanding.
No, they-
There was previously, but-
You can still bank it.
They did away with that. You can still get it back, just not as much as it used to be.
Yeah, you still bank it.
So we were cautious with the industrial zone standards. Megan had come across an important case, I think it was in New Jersey, about that, that unless you're off the grid with solar, all of the power is going onto the grid, you're being given credits to offset your costs during your higher use times. And I think that we can speak more to that as we develop a draft, but I think that's where we got the language. Solar generating systems intended to satisfy the electrical needs of the principal use, so that can be looked at over a longer period of time. So they're, and recognize that there are times of the year where if you're trying to serve the principal use, you're generating more during the summer, not using as much and, and using those credits later in the year, rather than saying the electricity, the electricity generated onsite has to be used onsite, just to try to recognize that it does all go to the grid and you're getting credits back even for a personal solar system at home unless you're disconnected from the grid.
So as, as we move forward, can I ask, unless there's an objection from a board member, can I ask that staff include a tutorial? And if staff wants to ask someone to come in and present that who's well-versed in the subject, that's, would be fine. I mean, if there's, if staff feels that there's someone that's better able to explain it. But a tutorial on these systems and how they work and how that works and who's tied to what and how credits are earned or not earned, how money is made or not made, just a basic tutorial on how those things happen.
Also the costs of it.
Yeah, because I, I think that, I think that some of that technical sort of understanding is going to be important for us as we make decisions.
I think that'd be a perfect discussion for somebody engaged in that industry as we've had offered tonight, so. We can certainly do that.
Great. Does staff need any more feedback to, to sort of move forward or you feel like you have some direction?
The last piece is the prime soils, I guess, if there's, seems like there's general consensus that prime soils or soils of statewide significance are an important resource. And there's, you could look at it as a way to preserve them and not have them filled with house lots over the next 20 to 30 years. If, and that'll be one, one potential way to look at it. I haven't really looked to see if there is a project that really impacts soils that are used, that are currently used for agriculture. Is there any kind of an impact fee that could help create cleared areas in other prime soils? I'm just thinking out loud that maybe that's a possibility, but I'm-
I, I think that's reasonable, yeah.
What's the, how is that determination made for prime soil? Is that a landowner determination? Is it a-
No, no, soils, the soils are actually soil tested and, and-
It's the USDA, I think.
We have, we have statewide maps that we have access to within our GIS system that we can, we can do that.
That might actually be, you sort of hinted slash didn't hint or very obvious about a question that the board's gonna need to answer. It's obvious that we all think that those soils that have been identified by USDA as prime soils are important. The board will need to decide whether or not we think it's reasonable to build on those or not build on those. That's a, that's a very specific question we're gonna have to answer early on. And you sort of brought up a discussion item, you know, with regard to sort of trading, right? Which we see oftentimes in, in wetland use on the planning board. That's, that's probably the most, the closest analogy I can think of where a developer might develop a particular percentage of wetland and they then rehabilitate a same percentage somewhere else or create new wetlands somewhere else. So something like that would be analogous to that, but.
And I'm not sure if that's been done for this purpose, but it's something we could, we could look at anyways. I think there is the possibility that there are prime farmland soils adjacent to an existing farmer's field that the farmer hasn't been able to afford to clear, you know? And that might be better located than the soils that are proposed to be used for the solar project, so it could be a mutual benefit.
It could be a wet section of his field that he just can't do anything with, too. He could put a nice, you know, solar farm through there. At least he makes money out of that.
Yep. I think I have enough to put together a draft that you guys can rework next month.
Excellent. Any, anything else from any members of the board on this topic? All right, next agenda item is a discussion to consider adopting language for backlots under chapter 60, article two, general provisions. I don't know. My, my personal, I'll start this one. The idea of backlots sounds really great, right? It's a way to infill in areas that, where we want to see more density, but where it is not feasible to create substantial internal roadways, right? It sounds like, that's, that's great. And I think it can work, but if we were to look at this, I would caution that the board would need to be really, really specific about where and where we don't want this. And as we think about this, also think in conjunction, are there other solutions that we could utilize within the city? Are there other solutions we can utilize to avoid the use of backlots? For instance, when I think of infill, I think of areas like the land in between Lake Street, this bounded by Lake Street, Park Ave, Hotel Road, I guess not Hotel Road. That'd be the other side, but, no, yeah, it would be Park, because Park is down on the other end, right? So you get this land where there's, there's like external neighborhoods with this internal huge lots. They're not zoned to be conducive for, say, your half acre lot, which are what's really driving the housing market right now. So as I think about backlots, I think backlots, to me, would seem like a very small solution to this issue of increasing single-family home density where we already have single-family homes. And I think there are actual huge parcels within the city that if we're zoned differently would, would create the same, would create a more preferable effect because you wouldn't have backlots, you wouldn't have these incredibly long driveways that are private drives, you would have single-family homes fronted by traditional city public ways, but that's.
Yeah, I mean, I guess, I don't disagree. If there are areas, there, there's a lot of open land in Auburn and so I think you're right, we would have to be very careful about what zones in which we were to preserve backlots. When I think of backlots, I think of some of the things that you might see in certain parts of Portland, for example, where there are, on not particularly big lots, someone will build something behind and it creates a much more dense neighborhood, which can be good or can be bad depending on how it's done, so. I would consider it, but I would wanna, this seems to me like this discussion ought to, and I think this gets to your point, ought to go hand in hand with looking at some of the way some areas are zoned, right? It can't just be done in isolation.
To that point, if we, if we were to adopt language that would allow and promote backlots, what sort of criteria would we want for that zone? Would it be for a specific zone, i.e. we will allow this in multifamily urban and multifamily suburban and, but not in the following zones? Or is it going to be based on a, a density standard such that it could happen in any residential zone so long as the law in question has a density equal to or less than half the abutting parcels, right? Is it the sort of thing where you're like, well, you know, so, and I said, so for instance, I lived in New Auburn, right? Where I grew up in New Auburn, my first house, when I was ready to purchase a house, was in New Auburn and just some fairly dense neighborhoods, right? We had some fairly dense neighborhoods. And then every once in a while, there'd be a house, you know, you'd be on like a, between a tenth of, third of an acre and then the house next to you had like an acre and a half, right? And then all the other houses beyond them were like between a tenth and a third of an acre. Well, in that context, because of the density of the surrounding neighborhood, it might make sense to say, yeah, backlot is not like gonna create a, a situation where all of a sudden we're carving things up to be smaller than they already were, right? So in my mind, that, that's one of the things I would want to identify as a board early on, is that are we using, are we saying this is going to exist within specific geographic locations or within specific zones or within areas that have specific criteria? So that would be-
So, I, I mean, it could also be and instead of or?
Yeah, it could.
In specific zones and with density rules, right?
Yeah, it could be lots of things. I think, I think those are some of the things we have to. The idea of how do you allow for a backlot itself is fairly straightforward, I think, as far as zoning is concerned. You know, you're allowing for a backlot to be split and, and the only thing that that backlot isn't gonna meet is the road frontage. And other than that, it meets all the other requirements. So in essence, it's really simple. So I don't think we're gonna spin our wheels trying to figure that stuff out, you know? It's gonna be like, where is it okay for these? That's gonna be the big question. I don't know, what are you guys thinking down here? I'm hogging the mic a lot.
I think it would help me to look at some real-world examples in some different zones of either some of the property owners that have requested this or just maybe, you know, if there could be a staff presentation where we could look at different examples of how, how this could work in different zones. Because when I look at the table in the staff report, you know, and for some of the denser zones, you realize that the minimum lot dimensions are really small. It's like, well, how would you even carve out the right-of-way to get to the backlot? Even if we did something smaller than the, the 40 feet that's staff asked about in the report, still, it just, it seems like it could be kind of implausible. So I, it would help to ground me in reality to look at examples.
Yeah, I think that would help everyone.
I'd look at this as a person that has a large amount of land and he wants to build a house for, you know, his mother or children or whatever else, they want to stay on that property to farm it or, or to, you know, just retire there. So, and having one access out to the main road, I don't see any problem with that.
You're right. It sounds reasonable when it's a family affair, but, you know, who knows who the next owners are gonna be, right?
Right, right.
So that's, you gotta think that, what's that gonna do?
I, I remember back when I was first married, which was centuries ago, you know, and, and we lived in a house that was behind the main house, you know? We had no problem, you know, getting in and out or anything. It was nice to have a landlord, you know, close, but yet, you know, far enough away,
We can certainly provide some examples. I think the, the requests so far have been varied from somebody who wants to just be able to create a little bit more value out of their house lot and sell a, a backlot to somebody else, to, sometimes it's a family affair, but if you're, not many people could go and build the house next to their mothers or build a house for their, their parents out behind it without getting traditional financing. And unless you can carve out a separate lot, you can't go to the bank and get financing to build a house on mom and dad's land, you know? They need a lot that's approved as a separate entity to have as collateral. And then the third example, and then do you really want to abandon that house when the family member no longer needs it? It's, people still want to have that value that they've invested to be able to resell to somebody else. And I guess the third example is, and it's financing related, is with a recreational use out on Witham Road, a disc golf course. They have enough frontage for a single parcel, they have a very large lot, so they're, they, they have a much lower density on their, I don't know the exact numbers, but let's say they have a 25 acre lot and there's a three acre minimum. They, you know, would need to, in order to get traditional mortgage financing, they need to separate the commercial use from the residential use. The owner there has built a disc golf course over 25 years on land that he already had a mortgage on and nobody ever questioned it. But now for somebody to buy that, they either have to buy it as a disc golf course and they can't finance the house, or they have to buy it as a home and the disc golf course has to go away. That's one of the scenarios that's driving this discussion is that, you know, partly a recreational use that the city's working to try to promote, but it's 90 out of 100 inquiries will be for a single-family home, trying to build a backlot for a single-family home, but could also solve the problem with this, this particular parcel.
I wouldn't want to see a subdivision being put in on a backlot like that, but, you know, a single home, excuse me, a single home I have no problem with.
Some backlot ordinance will specifically say that it cannot be used in a subdivision, so that would be, in order to not be a subdivision, you would really have to have owned that parcel for a five-year period before being able to do a backlot. And other ones will say that, you know, every existing lot in zoning districts A, B, and C, if we chose all residential zones, that would be one way to do it, is eligible for one backlot, but there's no way to use it repeatedly on a parcel over time, something like that a lot. I think that the issues that you're wrestling with are, are issues that I think we could find examples of how other communities have dealt with those same concerns, because I think they've been, they've been shared by other communities that already have a backlot ordinance.
Would staff be able to find any of those? I apologize.
Yeah, we can provide some examples. Lewiston has one. I think more communities have them than, than don't have them.
Let's be a fun Xeno's backlot paradox, where each lot has to be half the size of the one next to it.
Oh, my God.
And the, and the comp plan supports a method to deciding on lot shapes and sizes that's density-based, more so than dimensional standard-based as far as specific widths and specific depths. I think if you stuck with, the only way to do a backlot is if you have twice the minimum lot size that's required in your zone, then they would support that, that effort.
Well, I'm certainly open to this and I look forward to continuing the conversation to make a more explicit point, just in reaction to staff's questions about the right-of-ways. I think the right-of-ways, the, the right-of-way should not be covered, counted towards the frontage of the front lot. I think that that leads to over densification and potentially some road safety hazards as well. And the other thing is this issue in the diagrams in this brief actually made me think of the self-storage proposal out on Washington and how the little driveways, they stack up so closely with the curb cuts and it was actually pretty dangerous, especially considering how fast people drive there. And so ultimately, we said, you know what? The applicant really needs to invest more than they want to redesign how these driveways are configured. And I think that, you know, we might want to require that as well, just looking at the, the little diagram here in the brief, you can see that the, the curb cuts can get really close together. And I don't think that there should be a waiver for the spacing just because of this backlot thing.
Would you, if you were to adopt an ordinance, then would you favor requiring that the right-of-way be a shared access point between the two houses? So rather than having their own individual-
Unless there's quite a bit of space. I, I just, I wouldn't want to create a waiver because I think that the, the zoning ordinances specify the minimum distances between the curb cuts of distinct access points, if I'm not mistaken.
Yep.
And I wouldn't want any kind of special exception for that, just for this backlot.
Okay.
Yeah, I guess that would be the, the bigger point. Wouldn't matter to me whether or not it's one access or two, as long as there's adequate distance between the two, right? So-
But I would prefer to have the two going on to that one access to both houses.
I mean, yeah, that would be preferable. That could also be incredibly expensive, depending on the configuration of someone's current lot.
Sure, for sure, sure.
Like, like to the point where my fear is that, my fear is that they could go to the zoning board of appeals and win because it's a condition of their current lot that they can't change, that when they bought it, this is how it was laid out and now planning board is saying I have to move my driveway, you know, 80 feet that way and now, and my garage is over here, and, you know, like, it could be a, could be difficult. But if we, if we say, I think if we stick to the idea that, you know, you can only have these curb cuts, there's a minimum distance between curb cuts, well, that's, you're not, you're not requiring them to change anything about their current lot. Their current lot might not qualify, maybe they can't put in a right-of-way and maintain that distance. Well, you know, that's fine, but you're not requiring them to, to change it, to do it.
We can show some examples of other ordinances and try to provide some, some that will help answer some of the questions you've mentioned tonight and we'll see where it goes from there.
Yeah, I think that'd be really good. Any other discussion on this?
No.
Alrighty. Next order of business, number six, old business. We need to review and sign the January 14th, 2020 findings of fact for 301 Main Street and that only, do you have that?
I did it.
We had a copy of that in our packet. It looks like the members that were present during that meeting were myself, Mr. Martelli, Mr. Engler, Mr. Carroll, and Mr. Duval, so.
Do you want me to just pass that down?
Yeah, I think if you just pass that down as it comes by, we'll sign that and then- And then Eric will have to track down Dan and you guys are off the hook for this one, Next item on the agenda, seven, public comment. Is there any member of the public that would like to speak?
Hello, public.
All right, yeah. All right, so now we are on to number eight. Eight A, election of chair and vice chair. Staff did originally make this, make a recommendation that we take this out of order, but obviously we didn't. So the way, and I think, I'm actually, I might be the only person on the board right now that has been through one of these or knows what they look like. So the way these are to be conducted is the following. Thank you. Can you just pass that down, all the way down to Eric? So the way this is conducted is that one member nominates another member for a specific position. The member who was nominated chooses to either accept or decline that initial nomination. If the initial nomination is accepted, it requires a second. If only one individual is nominated, then we vote in the open, so we do a public vote. If more than one member is nominated, our policy stipulates that we shall vote via private ballot. Generally, we take up the chair position first and then the vice chair position. So are there any questions about the process? Alrighty. So seeing no questions, I will accept nominations for the position of chair. Is there anyone that would like to make a nomination for position of chair? All right. I will nominate Matt Duval for position of chair. Are you willing to accept that nomination?
Sure.
Is there a second?
Second.
Still interested?
I think Matt is a fantastic candidate.
Okay, well, you know what? I'll make the nomination, then you'll have to decide. I will nominate John Engler for position of chair. Will you accept or decline the nomination?
I will respectfully decline. Thank you.
Are there any other nominations? Seeing none, we will take an open vote. All those wishing to elect Mr. Matt Duval, chairperson of the planning board, duly elected. I will accept nominations for the assistant chair. This is hard for you guys, right?
Yes. Dan's not here to defend himself.
I know, I know. I'm just saying, yeah, right? Well, I understand there were some reasons why you might not want to be chair, but I'm going to go ahead and nominate Mr. Engler as assistant chair.
I'll accept that one.
Is there a second for that nomination?
I'll second that.
All right. Are there any other nominations on the floor? Seeing none, we'll take an open vote. All those in favor of Mr. Engler? All right. And we vote with one abstention? I'm assuming, did you abstain?
I abstained.
Okay.
Yes, I abstained.
All right. That is taken care of. Good job. I'm excited now. I get to sit off on the wings, all right. Having done that, I will ask, Mr. Duval, would you like to conduct items A, B, and C? Or would we like to delegate that for the remainder of the meeting?
I think you ought to finish the, finish the job. Thank you, though.
Start next time.
Upcoming items for March from staff.
The, you will have a solar project. We have the application. Most of the solar projects you're going to see over the next few months, and you're probably going to see a half a dozen or more, are probably not going to happen. There's a real rush right now to get your permitting in place, both at the state level and municipal level, to score well in the public utilities competition that happens this July. So there's not enough grid capacity and there's not enough credits, tax credits for solar projects to satisfy all the projects that are being proposed right now. But you're going to see a number of them, and I suspect, you know, some of them, probably half or more, will get built. It's just going to be sorted out based on scoring criteria, both at the Public Utilities Commission as well as getting approvals in time for June 15th. So they're eligible to apply for their Public Utilities Commission approvals. The one that you'll see next month is probably the biggest one that you're going to see. It's in the industrial zone. It extends into, from Lewiston Junction Road into Poland. So it's going to cover two communities, so it'll be a little unique to look at that. I think it's going to be close to 150 acres and 14.6 or 8 megawatts, and most of the ones you'll review are about 5 megawatts. So this one had some earlier grid approvals than this current, than the round that we're expecting for 5-megawatt facilities and is sort of ahead of the game. Looking at putting in front of you a few ordinance changes or revisions, because we've talked about that at previous meetings, just kind of clean up things or updates that need to be made. There'll be a shoreline zone, height clarification in the general development zoning district, access management standard revisions. Megan's working with the engineering division on some revisions to that. Procedural updates, tiny homes and event barns is just a sort of a thought below that we want to throw out there that we're getting a lot of calls about and we haven't really thought much about how to, how to deal with those. But tiny homes especially is a really common call now and currently, the state has updated their building code to allow for them, but Auburn has a 700 square foot minimum for a single-family home that prevents most of what people would think of as a tiny home. And some setback questions for utility uses. So Megan's been working on some, an issue that came up. So I would expect probably not all of those next month, but some of those. And the solar project is a required public hearing, so reviewing that under the, probably under the site plan special exception requirements, because they've provided their application before the council has adopted your, your new solar standards. We're working with the applicant. I think they're going to be willing to put together a summary of how they think they meet the proposed standards or don't meet it. That'll just be useful in comparing what you've come up with for standards to an actual project, too. I think that's pretty much it for next month.
All right. Other items that any planning board members would like to bring up at this point? All right. Seeing none, I would seek a motion to adjourn.
Motion to adjourn.
Second. Second is made. All those in favor?
Aye.
Meeting is adjourned.
Holy cow, we're out of here.
Wow. Eight twenty.